Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for your attendance this evening. Appreciate your time. Staff, thank you very much for attending. Our first item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? Hearing none from Commissioners, staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Hearing none, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. The second item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from the January 25th, 2016 meeting. Commissioners, are there any changes or adjustments to the minutes from the April 25th meeting? None from Commissioners, staff, any changes?
No changes.
None from staff. Hearing none, I would stand for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Abstained, and the motion carries. Our third item this evening is a public hearing. The public hearing is Dupont B. Now, Birch LLP has submitted an application for an interim use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles located at 12301 Dupont Avenue South. Presenting this evening is Ms. Dean. Ms. Dean, you have the floor.
Thank you. Take me a second to open up the PowerPoint. I'm not sure if the video's working.
Okay.
It appears not to be working on our monitors, so...
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to get going. Started, there we go.
Looks like we're up and running.
All right.
IT is an amazing thing.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. We do have an application in for an interim use permit for the storage of vehicles at the location 12301 Dupont Avenue South. The location from the property map here is located just west of I-35W, just north of Highway 13, and south of the Kramer Quarry, also south of the railroad tracks. It is within the Gateway zoning district overlay. The specific zoning for the property is Gateway Industrial Medium. The surrounding area is also within the Gateway area. The aerial photo gives a just overall view of the site area, the site conditions today. The particular location, it was a Levitt's Furniture Store back in the 70s and a warehouse building, and then it had sold. It's currently used as basically industrial warehouse distribution, and a portion of the building is used for record storage. This gives a better overview of today's conditions. So, again, a majority of the building today is used by record storage, the warehouse distribution, manufacturing. A portion of the building is vacant. The overall building size is approximately 170,000 square feet. Because of the uniqueness of the, how the building is used primarily for the record storage, a majority of the parking lot is not needed for employees or customer parking. The southwest portion of the site is used for customer and employee parking. However, the applicant is proposing to use the eastern portion, southeast portion of the property for outdoor storage of vehicles. Approximately 142 vehicles would fit in this location outlined by the red perimeter, and this is the area where they wish to store off-site vehicles from a nearby dealership. And again, based off of the unique uses, staff doesn't envision a parking problem. However, if the uses should change at some point in the future for the warehouse or for the industrial building, that at time of building permit, staff would evaluate the uses, and it's possible that the owner could have to come back and amend their original interim use permit if it's approved, or they could perhaps modify that, shrink it down, or provide additional parking elsewhere on-site, maybe reconfigure or restripe the parking As part of any outdoor storage of vehicles or outdoor storage of product, the city code does have a requirement that the outdoor storage is screened from public view or from the adjacent road. There is an existing perimeter fence that outlines that south portion of the property. It's currently chain link, and it's approximately six feet in height. Applicants proposing to keep that fence but would like to enhance it with a vinyl, I'm sorry, a, I think it's a poly-pro type product, mesh product, that would attach to that fence to enhance the screening, as well as plant additional trees in the interior portion of the fence, so between the fence and the parking lot. They are proposing a mixture of trees, crabapple, spruce, oak, out of a variety of color. One of the conditions within the staff report mentions that there is a overhead power line easement, as well as a storm sewer easement, that runs along the southeast, southeast portion of the property. It's quite large, it's about 225 feet across total for the power line easement, and then there's a 30-foot kind of easement that overlays, and that's, I believe, storm sewer. One of the conditions that staff is recommending is to have the applicant provide proof from the easement entity that it's okay to plant within this area. Alternate, an alternate solution may be to plant the trees in a different location on the site, or to find a species that would be acceptable to the easement holder, for example, maybe low-growing shrubs or perennials within that area to help enhance the site. Staff does recommend approval of the proposal according to the conditions in the staff report and on this slide. Just a brief overview, that it would be approved subject to that area that was outlined on the slide for 142 vehicles, or that approximate area, and that it could possibly, or the applicant could possibly come back in the future should parking not be met on-site due to turnover or change in the uses within the building, that they can come back for an amendment or administratively kind of reshift things around on-site at time of building permit. The applicant will also need to obtain that written approval from the easement holder or work with staff to either find an alternate, alternate location for the trees or alternate planting type. One condition we're also recommending is that there's no vehicle sales on-site, that this is purely storage of those vehicles. And then the last condition, that because the interim use permit basically outlines a specified time, we envision that this area will turn over and will redevelop at some point in the future, and that this would be subject to approval till January 1st, 2027. At that time, if redevelopment, if it's not right for redevelopment within that area, they could always request an extension as they get closer to that point. However, 2027 was the year that we've used for other interim use permits within the area, most recently, I believe, the Walls are interim use permit for their storage of vehicles just south of the site. With that, I'll leave it to the Planning Commission with any questions. Also, Colin Berg with BNA is also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Just, I have a quick question. When you talked about change in use and reduction of cars, so the IUP allows 142, why would they have to come back to us if they were going to have 130 on-site, I guess? And you, and then probably a follow-up question along with that, I really like the idea of administratively staff being able to handle any changes to this, probably not up, I mean, dramatically. Is that something that would typically go into a recommendation, or do we have some rules that will allow you to administratively handle this without coming back to the Planning Commission?
As long as the area is not greater than the 100, what would occupy that 142-vehicle space, then it wouldn't have to come back to the Planning Commission.
It would only come back to us if they say needed space for 167 cars.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Other than that, then a simple reduction would be irrelevant or could be handled administratively through staff?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dean. Commissioners, questions?
Commissioner. Commissioner Benke.
Ms. Dean, I guess my only concern is the product that they're proposing for the screening of the fence. The staff report seems to indicate that this isn't our normal product for this situation.
Other situations have been a metal mesh-type product that we've accepted in the past, as well as vinyl slats that kind of get weaved into the chain link. This was suggested by the applicant. Staff didn't have any concerns, as long as they upkeep with the maintenance and it's not, you know, tattered and torn.
That's where my concerns are that are. It doesn't seem to be as durable as some of the other products, and while this is a short-term use, obviously, we don't want it to end up looking bad, basically. So at this point, staff doesn't have any issue with the product?
No. If there were, if it became an issue, we would certainly work with them to get it to the point where it wasn't tattered and torn, you know, would it become a code enforcement issue? It could.
Sure.
Commissioner Benke, I do know we, we allowed this, and it was installed at the new Bobcat dealership where Burnsville Bowl was.
Oh.
This goes around the perimeter to that, and it does a really nice job of isolating the product.
Yeah, I've seen it before, just the staff report didn't talk about that, only the other ones were metal. Thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dean, I just wanted to be clear. The vehicles to be stored there are new ones and not pre-used.
That's correct.
Commissioner Levy.
Couple of things. Previous, the one you mentioned, that south, the Walls, or I think it was, sort of south, had some lighting associated with it. I don't see anything about lighting here. Also, is the whole, this whole lot fenced, not just the storage area? I guess I'm, I'm not clear where this fencing is and what the security issues associated with the facility are.
The Chair, members of the Commission, the fence is existing today and outlines the southern portion of the site, here outlined with my arrow. I believe there is a gate, or the applicant is proposing a gate as well.
There's a gate there now.
Yes, sir.
As far as lighting, I believe no additional lighting is proposed as part of this specific proposal. However, the applicant is in the process of upgrading the site because, you know, right now, it's not striped, so they're hoping to enhance it that way, as well as add the trees. But as far as additional lighting for security purposes, that's not part of the plan. The applicant certainly here to help answer any questions if that's something that they propose.
Commissioner Levy, if correctly, the Walls are, that was the applicant's reason for security, so from a land use standpoint, it's up to the, to the, to the people storing, what they're concerned about from a security standpoint.
That one was sort of a new construction thing, too, and this seems existing.
Other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, and at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item to please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, further comments? I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission recommended to the City Council approval of the IUP to allow an open storage lot at 12301 Dupont Avenue South with the following four conditions as presented by staff.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries.
Go to the City Council.
That goes, that will be going to the City Council on, I wrote that down, thank you very much, on May 17th.
That's correct.
Fourth item on our agenda this evening is also a public hearing. The public hearing is Larkin-Hoffman for an appeal to allow a reasonable accommodation and variance for more than six disabled residents to reside at the group homes located at 716 and 720 151st Street in Burnsville. Our first presenter this evening is our city planner, Ms. Gairles. Ms. Gairles?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have the floor.
As indicated this evening, this is something relatively new for the Planning Commission. This is a public hearing to consider allowing reasonable accommodation for what the applicant is doing. This process is not a variance or conditional use permit, it's really an appeal of the staff interpretation of the ordinance, so the documents that have been provided to you are the rationale for that. And there will also then, based on what happens this evening, if this goes to the City Council next week, they would hold a separate public hearing as well at that level. And that's a new process for appeals that's been put into place within the last couple of years. The subject site, there are two sites. They're located at the corner of 151st Street East and Chicago Avenue South. As you can see, along the north, they're bounded by City Park, otherwise, single-family residential zoning and land use guided by the comprehensive plan for both properties and the adjacent properties. We have two sites, so the application does consider two different sites. We have 716 151st Street and 720 151st Street. This is a picture from the front of 716 151st Street East, and in your documentation and information, this is referred to as the Lotus House. And then next door is, this is the corner lot, 720 151st Street, and this is the site that in your documentation is identified as a woman's way. In terms of the zoning ordinance and the appeal that we are looking at this evening, they are looking at twofold questions. One is to allow a state-licensed facility to have eight people, as opposed to six people that the ordinance currently allows. And then number two is to allow basically the definition of family that is in our city code now to be up to eight unrelated persons, as opposed to the ordinance definition currently is four or more unrelated individuals. As we indicated, the property is zoned single-family. Basically, you could have up to four unrelated persons or a family in a single-family residential unit, or there are certain state-licensed group homes that are also allowed through state statute, and they allow up to six individuals. In terms of the zoning ordinance itself, we have the definition, which is an individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, guardianship, or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit, or a group of not more than four persons not so related maintaining a common household, using common cooking and kitchen facilities, or residential program, group home for six or few persons as licensed by the state of Minnesota. So this is what applies to all single-family zoning throughout the city in terms of families, and in the R1 single-family zone, you can have a family per this definition in a single residential dwelling unit. The ordinance is also based on state statute, and this is directly from the state statute that talks about single-family uses. And again, we're getting at a state-licensed residential facility housing six or few persons. You can have other types of things, licensed daycare for 12 or few persons, and group family daycare to serve up to 14 or few persons, but the application this evening is talking about the state-licensed residential facility. So we're looking at the statute, and Burnsville ordinance have six or few persons, and the applicant is seeking eight. In terms of multifamily uses, group homes also identified by the state or through the state statute are also allowed in multifamily zoning districts, and there you could have additional persons as per the statute. We do have a requirement, and this is allowed by statute, that these be reviewed through a conditional use permit, but it is something that is considered to be permitted, subject to the review, to look at if there are any impacts to adjacent properties and to mitigate those. So these are uses that are allowed under our current zoning ordinance. The applicant has brought to your attention that they are filing this appeal utilizing the federal housing, excuse me, the Federal Fair Housing Amendment Act, and that relates to definitions and the application of persons with disabilities, et cetera, and basically the, the focus is, from their standpoint, is that the city's ordinance does not hold when it's related to persons with disabilities, and so under these guidelines, the applicant is requesting to have additional people other than our single-family use, an increase in that, and then also an increase in the number of people that can be in a state-licensed facility. There really is not standard, per se, in the city code related to the Federal Fair Housing Act, as well as many federal programs and local programs. You have got federal standards, and the way that those work is they apply to the states and to the local government units. So by virtue of what's stated in those various statutes, there is application. On the city, our code does not have the specific guidance in terms of this particular act. What we need to look at is, is the request, what the applicant is requesting, is it reasonable? And in terms of what's reasonable, we need to look at, does the request impose an undue burden or expense to the city? Does the proposed use create a fundamental alteration in the zoning scheme? Those are the two things. If the answer to either of those two questions is yes, it is considered not to be a reasonable, reasonable use or request. The recommendation from staff is, we believe that our zoning ordinance is, is appropriate the way that it stands, it's consistent with state statute, it is not discriminatory, it's based solely on the number of people defined in our ordinance. Our ordinance is very similar with those definitions to other local communities, and in addition to that, we are not looking at something that distinguishes people with disability as opposed to other folks. It applies regardless and throughout. So the recommendation from staff, we are recommending denial of the application as it's not consistent with the zoning ordinance, and the request is not reasonable as outlined in the, in the information that was provided to the Planning Commission. I'd like to call the attention to the Planning Commission. We did receive a letter of support for the application today via email, and that was handed out and provided to the commissioners, so they do have that information. With that, I can stand for questions. The applicant is here and would like to address the Planning Commission, and we also have our city attorney, Mr. Joel Jamnik, who is here to also provide guidance for the Planning Commission in your discussions this evening. for the Planning Commission in your discussions this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gairles. I appreciate your time. Commissioners, this is new to us, and just a couple of quick things. Typically, we are the body that holds a public hearing, and then we make a recommendation to the City Council. This is the first time that something has come in front of us where we will hold a public hearing, and then there will also be a public hearing regardless of how we recommend to the City Council. We are only a recommending body, and once again, we focus on zoning rules and land use. So, Commissioners, what questions do you have for Ms. Gairles? We'll try to get those out of the way, and then I'll have the applicant come up. No, Commissioner Workman.
Quick question. Thank you, Deb. With this variance, does this apply specifically to group homes, or does this a broad sweeping change to all single-family homes in the city?
It's not a variance. I think that that information was included, just to show you the types of things that we have considered when deviations are requested, but it's not a variance. What they are asking in their standpoint, I believe, just applies to these two units. But from a staff standpoint, we believe that it is much larger than that, and that it would have a negative impact in terms of our ability to enforce our zoning regulations and to move on. So you may want to, again, address that same question to the applicant and have them help you that way as well.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Gairles, just to clarify, the number of people that they are requesting, if it was not in an R1, that's allowed in other zoning districts in our city, it's just not allowed in R1.
That's correct.
According to our current zoning.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any question? Commissioner Benke.
Deb, I'm just sort of going to step to the report with some questions here. Under history, there's a comment that the city has not given any approvals for the past for occupancies or uses that deviate from the ordinance. Have we received any applications that would ask for increases above the statutory definitions of family or alternatives?
Not that we are aware of. We did look back, were able to look back through the case files back to the year 2000. But before that, we would need to further research that and bring that back to planning commissioner council.
Okay. And then there's some information that the license for these facilities are, they're not perpetual, but they do need to be renewed, and that the county is involved. And do we know what the county's schedule for that is?
That I do not. I'm not sure if Mr. Jamnik can address that, or?
I've got a word right at this moment.
Some are involved, the county is involved, but some are just issued through the state. It really depends on the particular license and operation they're working with.
Sure.
If I'm, can I, real quick, those entities are not required to check with the city in reference to zoning. It's simply the landowner's responsibility to check with.
Correct.
And I know I'd asked of staff as well, but the comment in the police and fire code considerations, that the roughly nine calls that have occurred in the last three years is not out of the ordinary.
That is, yes, that's correct. From my understanding, that's fairly typical. It just has to do with, you know, the types of residents that are involved in. It's not atypical for a group home type of use.
I think the rest of my questions would be for applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Singh?
No, I'm, I'm waiting for the applicant.
At this point, I would like to invite the applicant up to the podium. Please give us your name and address for the record, please, sir.
May I move this?
Sure. We didn't put it there on purpose.
I don't think I'm going to break it, but.
Well, you break it.
I'm moving it. Break it. Bye. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Bill Griffith with the Larkin-Hoffman Law Firm, representing the applicant, Carol Ackley and Ackley Real Estate. I think it was noted on the PowerPoint that Larkin-Hoffman is the applicant. We made the application on behalf of Carol Ackley and Ackley Real Estate. I'm going to give a few introductory remarks, and then Carol Ackley will really give you a sense of these facilities. They have been operating for, well, the longest period is 10 years. That would be a Woman's Way. And then Lotus House has been operating for a shorter time period at the request of the county. That facility was opened at the request of the county. Couple of things to note. I think the staff correctly noted that this is not a request for a conditional use permit. It is not a request for a variance. It's a request for reasonable accommodation under federal housing, and I believe it is fairly unusual in this community. Minneapolis and St. Paul and other communities have had a fair amount of experience with these facilities, and therefore, they've kind of learned, maybe on behalf of some of the other communities, the difference. And the big difference here is the city's discretion under federal housing law is fairly well confined. In other words, you don't have the same discretion over this decision as you might with other land use, purely land use decisions, that is, variances or conditional use permits. So that's why it's important, and I appreciate staff noting that, that this is not a request for variance. The other thing that I think is important to note is that these homes, and this act that we'll talk about this, really do operate as a supportive, single-family home environment. And it's really critical to the mode of recovery, the mode of treatment, if you will, that these residents, who are all, in this case, women, live in this single-family environment that's very supportive. They share common facilities, they share bedrooms, they share kitchens, they share living environment, and they operate as a small community. And so the notion that this is somehow high density because two of these homes exist side by side is really kind of a misnomer. At eight residents per home, I grew up in a house of 11, so, you know, that's maybe a large family today, but that's not unusual for eight residents, or nine residents, or 10 residents to live in a single-family home of four bedrooms. In fact, we'll talk later as we get more detailed in the technical response, that the federal guidance is for up to two residents per room. So the federal HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Agency, has provided guidance, written guidance, I think it was perhaps in the packet, that up to two residents per bedroom is considered reasonable. And so obviously, if we have two homes with four bedrooms and two residents each, we're right in that sweet spot for federal guidance. I think I'll pause here because I think it's really important to understand from Ms. Ackley's perspective, what's been accomplished here, essentially without incident. I think staff did a nice job of looking at the records and understanding that the nine or so calls in the last couple of years are really not unusual. I happen to live in a single-family neighborhood in St. Paul, right next to a group home, and I would say I get a lot more calls from my neighbors for service than nine in three years. So it's not unusual when these group homes are in single-family settings that there are some calls for service. But Ms. Ackley is more the expert than I in that regard. So we'll turn it over, and then I'll be back for a few more comments.
Ms. Ackley, welcome. Please give us your name and your address for the record.
My name is Carol Ackley, and my Burnsville residence is 14702 Oak Run Lane, Burnsville.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm the owner of these two properties in question, and the founder of the treatment models that we use at a Woman's Way and Lotus House. Both centers were developed due to demand for high-quality residential care for women in Dakota County. The facilities are licensed by the Department of Human Services and the Department of Health, respectively. In 2007, a Woman's Way was opened as we noticed that there were not enough beds in Dakota County for the women we were serving in our outpatient treatment center, who needed a higher level of care for their illness. They wanted to stay in their local communities for easier access to their children and their families while they were receiving treatment services. In 2011, Dakota County Human Services approached us about developing sober housing beds and treatment services for women integrating back into their communities after residential treatment. When the property next to a Woman's Way became available shortly after that request, we realized that we would be able to meet the full continuum of care for women seeking recovery from substance abuse and mental health disorders. Because of the proximity of the houses, the women could continue to support each other through building new networks of support in the community, which is critical to ongoing care and recovery. The women often comment that this continuity of care professionally and personally between a Woman's Way and Lotus House has been one of the most helpful components of their recovery. A Woman's Way and Lotus House have served over 800 women and their families. The clients and the staff are active members of the community. We are a part of the neighborhood. We take good care of our properties and are currently volunteering to help maintain Pahasapa Park, which has been a wonderful place for the women to play with their visiting children. We are a part of the neighborhood cleanup efforts after storms when needed. The women access the county workforce center, and many have found employment in the community. We are good community partners. In the bigger picture, I'm sure you're all aware of the critical need for treatment beds for substance abuse and mental health. That's been very much in the news lately. Minnesota has one of the lowest per capita bed ratios for substance abuse and mental health in the nation. Please help us change that. When we can't offer treatment in our communities, we all pay the price. We pay the price emotionally in our families that are hurt by untreated substance abuse and mental health issues. We pay the price physically in increased crime, domestic violence, and child abuse. And we pay the price financially through the loss of jobs, tax revenues, and the cost of supporting the criminal justice system and people who cannot get their medical needs met. Treatment saves lives and money every day. As you consider our modest request to add two beds for a Woman's Way and four beds for Lotus House, I respectfully ask that you consider this. Do we, as a society, want to be part of the problem? To not have enough treatment beds to serve the people who deserve good medical care? To be part of the ignorance and stigma that persists around substance abuse and mental health disorders, which are treatable illnesses? And the increased costs emotionally and financially to our families and our communities? Or do we want to be part of the solution? To provide care that is readily accessible, cost-effective, and compassionate to help women heal? Communities are often judged by the way they care for their most vulnerable members. Please help us continue our work to help women and their families heal and become productive members of our community. I'd like to end this with a quote from Emily Piper, who's the new commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Services. This is from an editorial she wrote for the Star Tribune about two weeks ago. Maybe you saw it. This is the last paragraph. "Our hospitals, group homes, and treatment programs should be places of sanctuary and recovery, where any of us would be comforted to know our family member is being taken care of. It is time for the legislature to support funding that will help more Minnesotans receive the care they need in the safest environment possible. And that's the work that we do at a Woman's Way and Lotus House." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Ackley, I appreciate your comments.
Commissioners, obviously, it's a very compelling story. It's a compelling need. One of the things that I would point out is, I understand how licensing works, is the city does receive notice of licensing from the county. You can check that with your staff. This is an annual renewal, and so I'm not sure where this kind of slipped through the cracks, but this, these facilities have been renewed for their licensing for several years that they've operated. So I wanted to address that question. The key to this is the understanding that this is essentially a protected use under federal fair housing law. And why is it protected? Because these folks who come for treatment are classified under federal law as disabled. It's a treatable illness, as noted by Ms. Ackley, but they are in fact disabled under federal law and therefore do the same treatment under federal housing law and therefore nondiscrimination law to enter into these facilities. Staff correctly noted the, kind of the twin questions you must ask. One is, does it pose an undue financial burden to the city? And I would submit no, since I think by staff's own admission, this has not been, there have not been concern about incidents in these two facilities. And second, does it create a fundamental alteration in the local land use or zoning scheme? And again, we would submit no. And why is that? Because these are single-family homes that can reasonably accommodate up to eight individuals, two people per bedroom, four bedrooms each. That is a reasonable family arrangement for these two homes. And federal law essentially says, if you can have eight related individuals in these homes, you can have eight unrelated individuals if they are disabled and they are receiving treatment or care. So that is the, it's as simple as that, and that's the key finding that you need to make. And if you make this finding, obviously, what you do is support the cause of recovery, the cause of treatment. All too often, when I stand in front of local bodies, the concern goes to, we must protect our neighborhoods. We must defend our neighborhoods against the incursion of outsiders, the problems that follow them. You've heard tonight, and you will hear from others, I'm sure, that there have not been problems. This is a community, this is a community service, a community facility that supports your very own residents. These are residents of Burnsville. These are residents of Dakota County. This is not an influx of outsiders bringing problems into your community. This is a service, a community-based service, providing help to your very own residents. And that's an important distinction, frankly. It really shouldn't matter where they come from, but the point is, these are your residents being served here largely, not exclusively, but largely. It shouldn't be the case that these residents have to leave Dakota County, have to leave their community in order to seek recovery. They should be close to their family, they should be close to the services they rely on for medical appointments. They shouldn't have to travel from Hennepin County or Norah County or other places. And that's why it's so important that we not set up a system of discrimination. And that's, that's not my words, those are not my words. Those are the words of the federal fair housing cases, and there are many of them. And I know your city attorney has looked at them. So these are the type of treatment modalities and settings that are appropriate, and has led to 800 women being successful in this program, in these programs over their existence. Eight hundred women. And yet, they've gone through without incident. They've gone through using your parks, I guess it's their residents, they're their parks, but they've lent a hand when there's been storm cleanup. They are part of your community, they are part of the fabric of your community. And so the question is, does it alter the single-family neighborhood to have people living in a single-family lifestyle, up to eight people in these homes? And we think not. And it's borne out by the long experience in both facilities. The R1 district, I would point out, already has higher occupancy uses within it. And I think sometimes it's a misnomer when we say R1 or single-family, that the only thing that can exist in those districts are single-family homes. You know better, because. You know better, because you're the planning commission, and you probably approved some of those uses. Therefore, based on that, based on the long experience, based upon the federal guidance of two persons per bedroom, based upon the fact that you have higher occupancies elsewhere in the single-family district, it does not alter the city's fundamental zoning scheme. It is not a threat to your community. In fact, it's a service to your community, and it's one that we all ought to embrace. You know, not to get personal, but I think every one of us has had a call in the last couple of weeks, maybe the last couple of months, about somebody who's suffered from addiction or maybe suffered from an overdose. I know I have. And the young man that I'm thinking about had to basically be put on hold for 60 days while somebody found a bed for him. Now thankfully, he's still alive, and thankfully, the bed was found. But his family basically had to deal with that crisis for 60 days until a bed was found. And every single bed is precious, and every single bed is an opportunity for recovery. And that's what we're asking you for. We're asking you for a reasonable accommodation for persons in one of the houses, two persons in the other house, a Woman's Way. And that reasonable accommodation should be made, must be made, if it can be done in this community. Thank you. We ask you to essentially approve the request.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Commissioners may have a couple of questions for you.
Before we hear from the city attorney?
Commissioners, why don't you ask the applicant? Commissioner Benke?
Yep. Mr. Griffith, let's see. Where to start? Some of these questions might be more appropriate for the applicant, but you can determine that, I think. There was a comment made that Dakota County came to Ms. Ackley and asked her to establish a facility that appears to operate as a board and... How is it licensed? What was this comment about how it's licensed?
Board and lodging facility.
That's fine. When they came to you with that request, did they give you direction about what they were looking for? And how did that factor into what you did here?
They came to us, and they said they had women in the county who needed supportive housing services as part of their recovery process. A lot of them after they completed a residential program like a Woman's Way, but not just a Woman's Way. And because they were so satisfied with the services, they could send women in Dakota County to it at Woman's Way, they came to us to see if we would open that next level of care.
When they came to you, was there a request to have it as close as possible to the other facility?
No, that was not part of it.
Was there a request of them to allow for up to eight people? The background from both staff and, I think, from your affidavit, discuss approximately 800 people have come through the program between both facilities. And the comment is also that they have seamlessly integrated into the community. And I'm struggling a little bit with trying to understand how that sheer quantity of people could be integrated into the community, considering that they probably couldn't have stayed there all that long, given the timeframe that you've been in the open.
Well, they were members of the community to begin with. I mean, we're not talking about us and them. It's all of us. These are our mothers, our grandmothers, our daughters, our sisters, our friends. And they were members of the community who were ill. And they came to us for help and for treatment, and we did that. And they begin this new life of recovery and become active, productive members of the community again.
Okay. I guess when I was looking at community and the neighborhood, which is how it's phrased, I was looking at it more from the neighborhood standpoint. It appears to me that it's a relatively transient situation. How long do the individuals spend at the houses typically?
At a Woman's Way, the average length of stay is 30 to 45 days. And at Lotus House, the average length of stay is 90 days to six months, sometimes a little longer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ackley, when Dakota County came to you and expressed their concern for a shortage of beds and asked you to help, was the other building, the one that you came on board, the second one that came on board, did you know of that building? Was it available? Or did you have possession of it?
At the time of the request, shortly afterwards, our neighbors from a Woman's Way came to us and said they were retiring and selling their house and moving up north. The timing just happened to work. And we realized that it was beneficial in some ways, both for the women, for staff, for a lot of things. And it was a nice house. It's probably the same architect that built both of these, so it seemed like the perfect solution at the time.
Follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Did you know at that time that the requirement that the city had was for four unrelated persons? Four or six? What did we have? Six, I'm sorry. Six unrelated persons to be in one single-family home? Did you know of that at that time?
I did not know that for that level of care. I knew it for a Woman's Way, but I did not think that applied to Lotus House. I thought it was a rental situation. The rents are either paid by GRH through the state for the women who apply for that or private pay.
Thank you. Commissioner Benke?
I presume that the Department of Health, I believe, licenses that, and it's under state statute 245A dot 11, which pretty much states that a permitted single-family use has a licensed capacity of six or fewer people, and that anything greater than six is actually considered a multifamily use. And that's pretty much right in the statute. Mr. Griffith, I guess you're going to answer that?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I'm glad you asked that question, because cases all over the country have dealt with this very same thing. That is, under a zoning statute and a zoning code, there may be a specific limitation even assigned to licensed facilities. However, the Federal Fair Housing Act gets at what is a reasonable accommodation. To increase by two or by four is, in fact, a reasonable accommodation under federal housing law. And so it's the interplay of the state law along with the overlay of the federal law. And this is not something that's new. It may be new in Burnsville. It may be fairly new in the Twin Cities. But there are cases all over the country that have said this kind of accommodation is, in fact, reasonable. It's in line with federal guidance, and there are cases that address the fact that a zoning statute, a zoning-enabling statute, or even a licensing statute may prescribe up to a certain number. And then that is the reason there is something called a reasonable accommodation, to change that number to something that is reasonably above that.
I think I also read in the joint statement of the Department of Justice that it isn't that it must be done, it's that it can be done, that reasonable accommodation.
Yeah, I think I would read it as it should be done. If it can be done, it should be done. And that is because, essentially, if you look at these facilities, they're serving the disabled. And if there's no limit in your single-family neighborhood to the number of related persons that can reside in these homes, then it's discrimination, I would say, per se, if you're not providing the same type of accommodation for someone who's disabled. So again, the staff has correctly outlined the twin questions. You'll need to answer those for yourselves, but I would say it should be done, not can be done.
So in this case, where one of the homes appears to have five bedrooms, you're not asking for two people for every bedroom, though?
We're asking for two people per bedroom, up to eight in each house.
The fifth bedroom is quite small and wouldn't be appropriate for two... I mean, it wouldn't fit. So all of the things that we pass over the years for all our licenses, we've passed every fire inspection. They come in, they measure the rooms to make sure there's enough room for everybody. We've passed all of those. I mean, it's unusual that we're in this position, but we've passed every inspection we've ever had to have for any license.
Sure. The concern would be adding another bedroom in an unfinished part of the basement, and all of a sudden, it's not eight, it's 10. And that's why I'm asking. Where one of the property cards basically lists a five-bedroom house, I wasn't sure if that was the office, if that was for something else. But basically, if your standard is going to be two people per bedroom, then all of a sudden, that home could end up with 10, and that's why I asked the question.
It wouldn't pass inspection, that room, for two people.
How are your offices staffed? Is there onsite staff?
At a Woman's Way, it's staffed 24 hours a day, and the women there are always with staff. At Lotus House, it's also staffed 24 hours a day, but the women have the freedom to come and go and get jobs and go to treatment and go to school. But they're both staffed 24 hours a day.
So are there nine people? There are going to be nine people in each house or 10 people in each house?
There's a staff person on at all times, yeah. There's an office in each house.
So you're asking for four residents plus a staff person?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was missed in our...
The staff don't reside there. They're taking a shift.
Yeah.
So they don't live there.
They don't live there.
We're not asking them to reside in the home. And that's fairly commonplace in the group home setting, that staff would be present.
And they're awake staff.
Sure. It's still occupied by eight people or nine people. I mean, if you're looking at occupancy from a building code standpoint, it would be nine people, not eight.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to address one issue that I think is relevant to the discussion tonight. And it goes to the level of discretion. In Minneapolis and St. Paul, where they've had many of these requests made and processed, they've both gone to an administrative processing. An application is made to administrative staff, and there are not public hearings, and it's nondiscretionary. People meet the standards for approval. I think that experience is really driven by the fact that not only are the beds needed, but the level of discretion is very narrow. It's not a matter of whether you can provide the opportunity. It's a matter of that you should provide the opportunity if the accommodation and request is reasonable.
Okay. Commissioners, other... Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been discussion about variance and not a variance, yet the code says six. So we're either asking a change in the code to meet the federal guidelines or a variance from the city code to meet the federal guidelines. And am I clear?
Commissioner Levy, the applicant is just asking for a reasonable accommodation for this property.
Under federal law?
It does not affect the city's... At this point, it could go forward, but the application is just for these two properties at this point. Okay? Okay. Okay. Commissioners, other questions? All right.
At this point, I will move on to a public hearing. I don't mean to bore people with a quick civic lesson, but we're going to try to be as organized as we can. I don't know how many people want to speak this evening. So when I do open the public hearing, I will invite people to come up and speak. As I've stated before, I'll ask people to give their name and address for the record. In the name of everyone's time, both your time and the Commissioner's time, please limit your comments to things that have not been addressed until this point. I'll do my best to try to structure some of the comments, but if an individual has already spoken to one particular thing, please try to use everyone's time appropriately, and we'll discuss new items. So with that, I will open the public hearing for this application, and I would invite anyone that would like to speak to please come to the podium. And ma'am, it looks like you were on your way. Ma'am, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Dana Sanderson. My address is 4981 193rd Street West in Farmington.
Good evening, Ms. Anderson. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. I am the program manager at a Woman's Way. I have been employed at a Woman's Way since July of 2013. And I speak not only as a professional, licensed professional in the chemical health and mental health field, but I also speak as a woman in long-term recovery from substance abuse. The reason I wanted to share tonight is because I know firsthand, both professionally and personally, how important the work we do at a Woman's Way and Lotus House is. We address things that no other facilities address. The service we provide is unparalleled in the field. Prior to me entering into long-term recovery, I was bounced around from many different facilities that weren't able to address all the needs that I needed from a facility. Many of the women that come to a Woman's Way are also healing from past traumas, unresolved traumas. It's so important that we're able to provide services in a safe neighborhood, in a facility that is like a home for them to do this very deep and intensive work of healing. And I just wanted to share how important and there is no other treatment facility for women like ours in Minnesota that I have seen. It's very important. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Joanne Vork, and I reside at 19330 Iteri Avenue in Lakeview, Minnesota. I am also a woman in recovery. I have been through several treatments myself, and until I found the Lotus House at River Ridge, I was not able to stay clean and sober. It provided a safe environment for me. It also provided a new family for me. I have children. I have three grown children who needed me. I also have a grandson, and I was unable to function. And until I came to this facility, I wasn't able to deal with my past traumas or things that I had gone through. And this program saved my life. And I believe in my heart that this decision needs to be made in a positive way to expand the help for women that we need. There is not a facility out there that I have ever researched that digs as deep as this does, and it's a lifesaving program. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name. Pop people are going to get tired of me saying that. I need you to give your name and address. What's that again? I'm sorry.
My name is Halima Mobin. I reside at 250 Burnsville Circle, Burnsville, Minnesota.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Esteemed big guys.
Our families wouldn't say that, so...
All right. I'd like to say I do support giving what the petition is asking. I am actually one of the first women who has worked in the Woman's Way from 2007, when it first opened, until 2014, before I went on to new endeavors. However, tonight, I heard that this is happening, and I thought I need to come here and speak. Because when the house first got opened up, I have seen women came in traumatized, scared, and then in the process and in time, I have watched them bloom with confidence. They have gotten better. They were able to get their children back. And Ms. Ackley has been... Ms. Ackley has been as strong as an oak. She took care of everybody, all the staff, all the clients, about herself, I don't know what happened, but I humbly request that you please give what the community needs, and we need this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ty Lubick. I'm at 712 East 151st Street, the property adjacent to them.
Oh, you're in Merzville? Okay.
Actually, four of the other homeowners that are immediately surrounding the properties are all sitting right here, too. I guess I was...
You were elected.
Step up and say something.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. I'll try not to get too long-winded, and, you know, I, I know we need these kind of facilities, and I know they're important, and it sounds like they do do good work from some of the testimonials. However, I would think you're not only, you, you need to kind of listen to a little bit of our perspective and point of view also. We would have loved to have had one of these open forums prior to any of the change to the properties. We weren't even aware of them until we had poked around or caught somebody to actually ask them to find out that they had been converted. You know, and I guess for myself, one example also is, yeah, we, we do think it's a nice community, too, nice neighborhood. We have four group homes now, all within a block of us, with the addition of these Again, yes, there's a need for the facilities, and I realize they're Dakota County residents, but there is also room to expand into more commercial-type zoned properties that may even have more adequate facilities to house more people. You know, when we're coming home and you've got 10, 12 cars lined up all over the place, you know, we've had a concern that we couldn't get a emergency vehicle even through for my neighbor on the other side. You know, and at the same time, too, it's nice to have neighborly conversations and socializing. You know, when I had to explain to my son and my nephews, when they had come in and asked me years back, what's wrong with the women next door, and why can't they talk to us? Well, I had caught her eventually to talk to her, and basically was told that, yeah, no, she's trying to reintegrate them into society and re-give them social skills and part of the program. And I understand that, and that, again, is great, and sure, we, we do need these kind of programs. But at the same time, I said, what's wrong with talking to, you know, nine, 10-year-olds and just saying hi when they try to say hi or whatnot? So, I had to let them know that, well, we are not able to speak to anybody, haven't for years. We, we can't talk to them, and I had to just tell the boys that, yes, we want to be neighborly, and we do want to basically spread God's love, but I said, with the situation there, and I said, we have to just pretend basically that nobody is there, and that's a little hard, too. You know, personally, I would rather have a couple of single families living next to us, and maybe a couple more kids, and opportunities for social integration ourselves. You know, and I, I didn't, I wasn't aware with the R1, you can have up to six people that are unrelated, all living in there. I'm a real estate appraiser, so, I mean, I knew the zoning, and was always kind of questioning how they did manage this conversion and the property types to be flipped without us ever being notified. So, I guess that's been a concern for all of us. We really did not want larger amounts of people, and like you say, there's staff people on, and, and just the amount of vehicles everywhere, you know, is kind of a concern again for a few. And, well, I guess, yeah, I guess we're, we're actually all, you know, hoping that it, it does not up the, the level of occupancy. So, appreciate your time, because we're also a little concerned about our property values also, because I know from a real estate standpoint that it definitely does have an impact, especially when you have that amount of them right in your block of your residence. And, you know, ask a real estate agent also. If they're doing their due diligence, they'll be pulling up those records, and they might convince homeownership in a different neighborhood, you know, are you aware that there's four group homes, or that you'll be moving right into this environment, and possibly less kids or other single-family homes? So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time. One of the, maybe one at a time? Go ahead, sir. You're, you're closer, I guess.
Lady first.
Oh, okay. Ma'am, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Katie Beckman. I live at 8759 138th Street West in Apple Valley.
Go ahead.
Hi. On October 14th, I entered into River Ridge's treatment program. I was physically beaten, mentally traumatized, and spiritually shattered. I was a victim of a violent assault that resulted in the murder of the man who was my friend. I did not know how to handle that, and at the time, I had been sober for four months, and I wanted to continue that sobriety, but I knew I couldn't do it on my own. I was turned down by many treatment facilities in St. Paul, Minneapolis, because my assault was not domestic, and I wasn't currently using. I had to be currently using to get into their programs. Within four hours of calling River Ridge, Carol Ackley and her team of staff approved me to come, so within four hours, I was admitted. From the time I walked in there, I started to heal the scars on my face, my heart, my soul, and actually, my family. Carol Ackley and her programs led me to understand my addiction, my criminal behaviors, and just life itself. For over 20 years, I've been in the system, and the result has always been pretty bad. Since I started in October, I have learned coping skills to deal with the trauma of my attack, and to cope with the memories of witnessing my friend's murder. I couldn't look anybody in the eye. I was shameful, and every one of the staff members there didn't treat me just like a client, they treated me like a friend and a family member. Since then, I have successfully completed parole, which I have never done in 21 years. I have, from going from a woman's way, I entered at the Lotus House. I now have relocated out here from St. Paul. I am successful, I've got a job, and like I said, I can look someone in the eye, something I couldn't ever do. I'm asking that they both stay running, and if they ask for more, I ask that that get approved. It would literally break my heart if someone couldn't get the help that I got. That's all I got.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Yes, sir. Round two.
My name is, my name is Paul Bonn. I reside at 721 East 151st. I'm directly opposite the Lotus Facility. I'm also directly diagonal to a woman's way. I would like to make a few comments, one of which, I think it has been made clear that there have been over 800 women through these facilities since they were turned on. And the definition, the redefining what a family exists, kind of took me aback. The rest of this facility, it's a great program, I'm sure, and we all need these facilities. However, this facility is at the end of Chicago and 151st Avenue. There is a significant traffic impact on that corner. That route is used by many families to reach the roads that are back in there in the residential areas. They're frequently at shift change, approximately seven o'clock in the morning, one vehicle comes in, parks in the street, the other person that is leaving, leaves for the evening, there's a vehicle in the street, and other vehicles that come in when the, the women are on their, their trips out. There's a lot of traffic. People are picked up, shift workers are picked up frequently, traffic in and out. We also had some problems with excessive trash being put in the containers and blowing out, and had, had to pick up some extraneous, as you can imagine, that many people in the facility would generate a tremendous amount of trash and refuse. There's also been problems with snow removal, vehicles parked at an inconvenient time when plow comes through, so it's been difficult to keep the streets clean. There's also a significant, no one is discriminating here. We're not discriminating against anyone. We've taken the facility, it was foisted on us, we live in the neighborhood, we're all neighbors, we all communicate with each other. Again, the women are not allowed to speak to us, speak to my children, speak to anyone else in the neighborhood. It's often sad when the facility is approached by schoolchildren trying to sell candy bars, et cetera. The women are not allowed to answer the door, and they frequently come over, how come I see people in that building, and why are they not answering the door? It's difficult to, to explain to a, a school child trying to sell candy bars. So, thank you very much, your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
My name is Nina Seraphin. I live at 5701 Beard Avenue, Edina.
Go ahead.
I want to start off by saying that I do understand that living across the street or next to a treatment center or halfway house is not the ideal situation for your kids, for your family, for your neighborhood. However, that being said, these homes are vital. I have had this disease called addiction for the last six years of my life, and I was a resident in a woman's way two months ago, and it saved my life. And I firmly believe that no other treatment facility, no other program, no other curriculum-based, trauma-based treatment center could have done that for me. The seven women that I lived in the home with are now my best friends. They understand what I've been through. Living next to a Lotus House was very beneficial, just kind of knowing that your neighbors right there next to you know what you're going through as well. We feel the same as the neighbors feel. It, it is hard that you can't talk to the neighbors, it is hard that you can't go out and talk to the kids and explain the situation, but it's just how it needs to be for now. But, all I can say, I think the main point that we all, everyone here wants to make clear is that this, these homes literally save lives every single day, and there are very, very few places, even in the entire country, that can do what River Ridge has done for people. It's an incredible place, so please, please pass this, because it's worth it for everyone involved.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tracy Fornutton. My address is 13208 James Avenue South, Burnsville, Minnesota, 55337. Before I say anything on my own personal behalf, I do have two letters with me that I'd like to submit. I don't want to read them, because I didn't open them, but they're from people in the community that have passed them on to me to pass them on to you, so if I can get that Well, I, I, like I said, my name is Tracy, and I had the honor of being a house manager at both a woman's way and a Lotus House since August 2014. I have to say that I've also been in politics for over 15 years, and right now, I'm very proud to see a lot of people here that I know have never been to a public hearing. So, I think that it proves to itself tonight that we are productive members of society. I also just wanted to say, too, that being somebody who was employed there, it's a very special thing going on there, on 151st Street East. This, these two houses are in a residential area, we know, but working there and being employed there, and working among women who have trauma and addiction, it's almost like they can focus more on themselves and focus more on what they need to, because it's the comfort and the safety of being in a residential area. I understand that, I've heard tonight a couple different things about, different things about the neighbors not being happy about selling Girl Scout cookies to our women, and different things like, you know, some obviously valid issues with parking or things like that. But I have to tell you that I live in Burnsville, and I have potheads next to me, and I have people in my neighborhood that are probably louder than any of our women. The rules that we have in place there, our standards are high. We ask a lot of our women because we believe in them.
That's okay. Take your time.
And I think it starts a good conversation for us as neighbors. With all due respect, to people who oppose this, I, I only have to ask the question if they have daughters, or know any women in their lives that have needed safety and help, I'm just asking for compassion here from you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Tracy, we appreciate your time.
I'm not here. Oh, wait a second. My name is Dina Rogers. I live at 708 151st Street, I'm one house up from the two houses in question. And I wrote a bunch of notes, and while I will go through them quickly, because while you only heard them once doesn't mean it's not reciprocated by everybody else. You know, I was wondering what type of handicaps are there? It was to say if I slip down my driveway like this, I will end up in those two people's driveway or across the street. They, and then, the other note is, you explained what that housing was. We know who owns it now. We didn't have any idea that those houses were going in there, the first one, the second one. There's two more within a block of us. There was another one, but the ambulance went so, went by so, so often that I think they finally shut that one down. My big question, Carol, thank you for all what you've done. It sounds like you may have the, you should get the Star Award for all the people you helped. Can we duplicate those, that, that's in someplace else, rather than in the location where it's at now? If we can, that would be wonderful. Like I said, we don't get a notice that we're, these houses are showing up, and it does deteriorate the value of our houses. Just ask a real, a real estate person. So, my question is, how do we stop this? Four houses... So my question is, how do we stop this, four houses in a block area, in the future? And it was kind of told to me that there is no way to stop it, and that's what I'm asking the council. Like I said, we didn't get any notice. The reasonable thing bothers me, because it's 6:00 now, 20:00 tomorrow, and it'll be all over Burnsville. So, if you approve it this time, what's to stop everybody else from using this as an example and saying, "Hey, I got five bedrooms, I can put four in there." Bunk beds. Zoning codes, you told us what that was. The parking, when they get up to my, when they get up to my front of my house and pass, there's a lot of people in there, and it happens a lot. Cigarette buds are out by the end of my driveway, they're allowed to walk. You know what, I never smoked, so that was never an issue for me, but I get the repercussions of that. What do I got here else? Meeting of handicap, I know what meetings handicap is. I just spent 66 days in rehab, and I got the use of my arm back. I can hardly go outside, but it's coming. So I don't know what handicap is all involved with this. I know there's a deck out the back, and they can get up with a wheelchair, but I don't know what the internal is. And you know what? That's all I have. I mean, I have no, I know have no regrets. As far as we need these housings, I don't agree with the additional people down there. I think it's just an open can of worms that the council's going to have to deal with. Week after week after week, is this a money-making proposition, or is this helping the people? If this is the only, and it was stated twice, the only one in the US, let's get Carol on the bandwagon and get her duplicating this to all 50 states, because it sure sounds like a wonderful, a wonderful program. One more hand for her.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little slow, sorry.
You're fine.
My name is Terry Dahlquist, and I live at 6620 Giordine Path West in Rosemont, Minnesota.
Go ahead, Terry, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Well, so I had already prepared a speech, because there wasn't anything that I wanted to forget, but you know what, a lot of these people have already said things that I would say in my speech. So, what I do want to say that hasn't been said, is not only is this program valuable to the community that which it already resides in, part of how I am familiar with these ladies is because I give them rides to and from treatment, to and from their jobs, to and from medical appointments, because they don't have cars. So I'm not sure what the parking issue is, because I'm there, ever was there every day, and I've never had any issues. I always pull right into the driveway, drop them off, and so on. As far as that goes, I'm not really sure what they're seeing that I didn't see. But I can understand the frustration with the kids, that maybe there might be some issues there, which I think Tracy touched base on, on that. I think one thing to remember is that addiction can be scary. People don't know a lot about addiction, because it's new as far as the medical treatment as a disease. And I could see if there was safety issues, where houses were getting broken to, or there was a menace to the neighborhood, but there isn't. These women are looking for a safe place where they can go and become what they should have been in the first place, before this disease took hold of them. And I would just encourage all of you to just be open-minded to the possibilities of what this means for these women, and the further treatment that they won't get outside of this, not the same way. A house setting helps teach how to cook, they learn how to find jobs, they learn how to live as a family, and that's what this community is all about. And most people like myself, I don't have a good relationship with my family, and these women taught me what that means. They taught me what it means to have authentic relationships with other people, because of them and what they're learning through this process with what Carol is teaching. It helped me come to terms with the fact that I have a disease, I am an alcoholic, and I have to live with that every day. But because of what she does for me and for the other women of the community, I am now able to start living. I wasn't living before, and I'm living now because of what she's brought. And it just, it saddens me to think that this could go away and that women will not have the benefit of this going forward. So, I just urge you to be open-minded about that and allow it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Terry, I'm sorry. My writing was not that good. Anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I will close. Can you, the camera won't see you, and they won't be able, I'm sorry, to have you come back up, but. And Mr. Roger, if you could. You are also a resident on 151st Street, correct?
That's correct. I just want the council to recognize that it is our neighbors, or it's my understanding that the program is based on a lot of what Carol's done, but Carol is going away. So there will be another person and another staff in her place, and so what Carol has developed goes away. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is based on what Carol's done, not what future people could do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay. Ma'am, please give us your name and...
My name is Diana Montgomery. I reside at 4786 141st Street West in Apple Valley. I've been a resident of Dakota County for 18 years. I am a woman in recovery. I have gone through many treatment facilities who have, are in a hospital setting or outpatient setting, two of them in Burnsville. And I have to say, you go your 30 days, out the door you go, have a nice life. This facility is not like that. You come out of outpatient or inpatient, you come to this facility, and it's what it is. They teach you how to live without your drug, without alcohol, without drugs, whatever it may be. Because once the alcohol and stuff is out of your system, it becomes a matter of living. How do I live without this? And that's what this facility does. It teaches women how to live, to cook, to clean a house, to take care of your children, to do all the things that everybody else takes for granted. So, I've met many of these women who, from the beginning to the very end, that have walked through this program. You know, the woman that was up here, who couldn't look you in the eye? I know, she couldn't look me in the eye. Now she smiles, now she holds her head up, now she has a job, now she has hope, and that's what this facility provides. It provides hope for women who are hopeless. And I am, I'm also, I live in a neighborhood, and believe me, I have not had a choice on who my neighbors are. And believe me, I would have liked to, because many of my neighbors I have to call the police on. And, you know, sometimes you don't get a choice who lives next to you. And I don't know what to say. You know, if these facilities could be in a hospital setting, that'd be great, because we could have more of them. We could have more women go through, we could have more lives saved. But they can't. So, I would ask that you would take this into consideration. These houses are saving lives, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Selena Mendolia. My address is 3175 Little Crow Drive, Shakopee, Minnesota. And I have the pleasure of being with all these ladies in recovery. I'm in recovery myself, and some of the things I didn't hear spoke of is that not only is this something that's highly needed, and I would rather have these ladies as my neighbors than some of the neighbors I have. And with that being said, yes, these women are getting help, but when you're helping these women, you're also doing preventative measures. You're breaking a cycle for their children and for their families. This has become a preventative for other things than just the recovery. You're mending and fixing and stopping a really bad cycle. And so, that was something that I thought needed to be addressed. I know it must be difficult as far as the neighbor situation, but as far as like, some of the things I heard, I thought it was sweet that he gave her the commendable props that he did, but was that, as far as traffic and people and loading in and out of the van, it doesn't sound much different than kids getting on a school bus in any other neighborhood. And, you know, or maybe a church gathering once a week, and what if it was a Mormon family living in the house? They tend to have, you know, 11 children. I have friends that have that many children. So I haven't heard anything that has been detrimental to the neighbors where they've had trauma or crime or anything like that done. I believe that kids aren't able to, they're not allowed to speak to one another because of some of the trauma that has happened to these women. But I hope that it'll also be looked at as not us and them, because this is a we thing. We're all people here, there shouldn't be a stigma, there should be compassion, and embracing the change of how we can better everybody in the community, and if it's not hurting anyone else, let's embrace that. Thank you.
Patty Boover, 5134 Upper 183rd Street, Farmington, Minnesota. I would just like to, most everything I would have liked to have said has been said, but I would just like to also let yous know that addiction isn't something a person chooses. We don't wake up one day and say, "Hey, I think I want to be an alcoholic or a drug addict." It's not, you know, it's, it's something that hits a person so hard, and really, really destroys your life. And Carol's programs have brought us more than just our lives back. And as far as the, I don't know about the vehicle, I was there almost two years ago, and about the vehicles, they have staff member vehicles, none of the residents had vehicles or were allowed vehicles there. So, I don't know about that part, but Carol's work is very important, it saves a lot of lives, and I really hope you guys will think hard about it, because it's not something we chose to be, it's something that happens to many of us, and we really need help, and Carol's help is awesome. I mean, it does a lot for everybody. I mean, it's a program where a lot of us succeed, and I have two jobs today. So I'm contributing back into the community, and most of the women do. They get jobs afterwards, and they become a part of the community, they do everything. Well, like I said, all of this has been said, but like I said, you know, we don't choose to be alcoholics and drug addicts.
Hello, my name's Heather Thermos. I reside at 14743 Chicago Avenue, Burnsville. I wasn't planning on talking, however, I currently work at a woman's way. And I take great pride in what I do, in people who I serve and my coworkers. So it was really sad when Lotus closed, and I am still work, I work on the weekends. So I just want to speak to the property. So I manage the house on the weekend, I'm there for 40 hours. I share the shift with another, which is the clinical team. So when I started about two and a half years ago, we, house managers go through about two weeks of extensive training at the houses, and my coworkers take you step by step of what to do. So I just want to speak to like the maintenance around the house. So the trash, trash gets taken out three times a day. And I was specifically told to make sure you tie the trash, the trash bags, so none of the trash gets out. So every trash bag that goes in the trash is tied, in case of the event of somebody hits it or storms happen, there's not trash flying everywhere. To talk about smoking, so the women are allowed to smoke, they're allowed to smoke about four times a day, 15 to 30 minutes, it's on a schedule. They're never allowed, when we go on walks within the community, to smoke, that's prohibited. And we do have certain containers outside the residents, so that they can discard their cigarettes properly, and we take care of that. I also want to talk about the snow removal. So Carol had in place, if it was anything over two inches, we had a plow company that would come out and plow. Anything less than two inches, whenever the snow would stop, we would get out typically like 6:00 AM and shovel it ourselves. So the driveways were always clean and ready for incoming staff. At a woman's way, our driveway has, we have a pretty large driveway, so we can fit about three cars across, and then about two cars behind that. There has been times where it does get congested. However, Carol has always let her staff know that that's a problem, and we've always did the best to accommodate that. And I know Carol has always voiced the concerns of the neighbors to us, so that we'd be aware of that. And also, I would like to propose like an open discussion, maybe perhaps to solve maybe a problem in the future, for, so with the neighbors regarding what to tell their children. This would actually be a great opportunity to fight against stigma in mental health and addiction, and have that open forum with your child regarding what these women are dealing with, and open that dialogue, so it doesn't have to be a secret anymore. We can come out and be a community, be informed, and have our kids be informed of, hey, everybody deals with this, everybody knows somebody that deals with addiction or mental health. And I just wanted to come up and speak that, so I would have no regrets. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I'd like to take this moment to thank everybody that spoke, I appreciate everyone's time this evening. I know it's a very emotional topic. Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner Levy.
I thought we were talking about two places, now I'm hearing that there are four, not necessarily the same group, but there are four in the same neighborhood?
Commissioner, the application, or the accommodation application this evening in front of us is for these two specific homes, and those are the only two that we're addressing this evening. We were not provided background of other group homes in the neighborhood, and that's outside of what we're addressing.
And then the last speaker, I think it was, said that Lotus House had closed, I guess that, or did I misunderstand?
Could the applicant come up and give us some information there, please? To answer the Commissioner's question. Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, that is correct, Lotus House has closed. The property transaction is part of a larger transaction that involves five facilities, including two at River Ridge and one in Minnetonka. So these two houses, two outpatient facilities, I believe they're outpatient at River Ridge, and one facility in Minnetonka. The operator of that facility has closed. If he's here in the audience, he can address that question as to his reasons, but that is in fact correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, other questions for the applicant, or questions for, anyone else? I guess I'll start then. This is a very difficult topic, and I'd like to just explain a couple of things...
This is a very difficult topic and I'd like to just explain a couple of things. We've had some people refer to us as the council and we're not the, we're not the city council. We are not an elected board. We're, we're appointed by the city council as volunteers and we're the planning commission and our, our scope of what we focus on and what we have to deal with is, is very limited. We deal with planning and zoning and land use. And we occasionally, we'll work on comprehensive plans, but the majority of the time, and as we have to look at it, is how it's based in the applicant against the zoning rules. So, and I want to also clarify that we are just looking at a variance to go from six to eight. We are not acting to close a facility or to do anything other than that. The, the, the thing that's in front of us this evening is simply the act of taking the request from six people, which is in our current zoning, to eight people, which is not. So with that said, I do believe that I would be voting to, to not move this forward, would not the, to, I want to make sure I say this, to deny the application for the change in applicants to the, to the city council. Commissioners, other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Benke.
I have to say that I'm floored right now by what we just heard. Quite honestly, I was under the impression that facility was active and continuing and I, in, in listening to everything else I heard, I was quite impressed with what's going on and I really thought that the, the number of people was consistent with the neighborhood. I grew up in a neighborhood where eight and 10 people per house was relatively normal. The traffic concerns are just that, concerns, and they happen or they don't. The garbage, the same thing. I started looking at it and thinking, well, this does seem like a reasonable solution, except now I'm hearing that what is there doesn't, it doesn't exist in one of the homes and may not exist in the other later. I certainly wish that would have been brought up during our, our communications. To have it dropped on me now, I am honestly thinking that this feels a heck of a lot more like a business decision and nothing more than that. And because of that, I have to vote no as well. This cannot be a financial choice. This cannot be a choice that supports, simply supports a financial decision by the current operator.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioners, Commissioner Singh. Now I'll get to Commissioner Workman. What?
I doubt you forgot my name. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you know, I couldn't help but listen and really tugged at my heart to know we have to discuss this and we have to make a recommendation. With all that said, this is a facility, these are two facilities that have provided tremendous help for women in our community. And like Mr. Darquist, I commend Ms. Axley for the program she has had. I think it's something that can be duplicated across the nation and she needs to be commended for the work she has done, helping women to get back their lives and to be part of their families and part of society. What I heard, as Commissioner Benke has said, really mistaken back when I'm told that Lotus House is closed and it's possible that the women's way is going to close, probably will close soon. The fact that the city has ordinance, the state has ordinance that, within which we have to operate, the application is for reasonable accommodation and I understand very well what that means. But I understand, I also understand a gray area that an application can have. Even though I support the program, I also listen to neighbors who have concerns and our job as planning commissioners is to look at the codes and the land use. And I see a problem here with increasing, even if they both are functioning, in increasing the number of residences in each one of these buildings. The state law and the city of Burnsville ordinance tell us that six people. And we are, we are being asked to increase that to eight. And I can't do that. And we are, again, we don't make a decision. We make a recommendation to the city, to the city council. And after listening to everyone and listening to Commissioners, I, I will have to vote to deny the application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Chair. I would echo Commissioner Singh's remarks. The city code limits six or fewer persons as defined by the state of Minnesota Department of Human Services. We work by ordinance and what is in place and to deviate from that is not our position. So I would concur with the rest of the board and my agreeance that this is a denial on my part as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Levy.
I'm going to take the opposite stance. Federal guidelines is a request reasonable. Economics aside, because I don't fully understand that, the request seems to be, to me, to be reasonable. Does the request result in a fundamental change to the neighborhood? The change took place when the facilities first opened, whatever it was, years ago. Going from six to eight, to me, does not result in a fundamental change to the neighborhood. So I would be in favor of making the change or allowing the change from six to eight.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Any other comments? Commissioners, at this point, Commissioner Benke, I'm sorry.
Just, just to follow, Commissioner Levy's position is similar to mine. I just have taken a different tact with the revelation that the current facility is changing significantly. And otherwise, I would have been voting for it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I would conclude that I, I think it's, I think there are, we've gotten some pretty emotional testimony this evening. It's an amazing program. We've also heard from the neighbors from the standpoint of their concerns, but I have to narrow the conversation down once again to what is, what we deal with. And at that point, I, I had spoke to, to my non-support. So Commissioners, at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Singh.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council denial of the application.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Singh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Do you have the division of the House?
Yes.
Okay. This approval process, even regardless of our vote this evening, will go in front of the city council on May 17th. So the process will, will move forward. At this point, we do have a pretty full House. I am going to recess the planning commission for about five minutes to, to get the council chambers cleared because we do have another application in front of us this evening that we need to give them our full attention. So we're just going to recess here for five minutes real quick and hopefully we can clear the council room and then we will start up with our, our last application.
This is a public hearing at the Council level.
I thought I'd stated that in the beginning. I'm sorry, both of them. We will, I don't think so. Thanks. We will reconvene the Burnsville Planning Commission. I appreciate everyone's time this evening. The next item on our agenda is also a public hearing. It's an application of Eleven Investments LLC for a planned unit development amendment to change the current small office use to allow personal service use for two separate businesses, a medical esthetician and a hair salon. Presenting this evening is Ms. Garros for the second time. As soon as Deb gets to her podium, we will move forward with this application. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see friends. We've been here a lot.
Let's go get coffee. We've been hanging out so much.
You know, the chair, the chair should have a reception.
Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
We do have a public hearing. This site is very familiar to the planning commission, so I won't go in great detail about the history, et cetera, but we do have a property that has a planned unit development zoning. And what the applicants are requesting is to amend that planned unit development to allow in the building at 1378, 786 Frontier Court, two personal services businesses and we'll discuss those in a little bit. The subject site is located northwest of the intersection of Frontier Court and McAndrews Road East. The site is zoned B3 and planned unit development. The zoning of the property goes back to about 1997 when the site was rezoned, or excuse me, PUD was approved for this particular site to allow three buildings, three small office buildings on the property, as shown. And there were some deviations granted at the time for, I believe, for fewer parking stalls than they could have had, but they do have proof of parking for that. And then in addition to that, they did receive deviation for the amount of impervious surface and that was in exchange for them constructing a stormwater pond on the south part of the site and also stormwater improvements and providing the needed easements for the city for drainage and utility purposes, including over the west part of the site for the dig pond and then ultimately that improved stormwater management for this area to drain and enter into ultimately Lake Elamagnet. The previous applications we have had have been for the northern two buildings. This is the first application we've had for the southernmost building. Briefly, we had talked about some of the previous planned unit developments, just to note that we included this in your packet as previous packets, that this general area has been the subject of many planned unit developments and various projects. There's been a lot of work that has been conducted between the neighborhood, the city, between the, the original owners of the property that processed the PUD application to which we are amending this evening. The, there are two uses that are proposed within the building. One is a proposed salon. Both salon and the medical esthetician are considered to be personal services. This is an item that we researched prior, or actually following one of the last public hearings. It was a request of the, one of our planning commissioners to check into what were the uses that were allowed at, when this planned unit development was approved. And in 1997, the ordinance read that offices of a general nature would be considered permitted uses for this area. Since then, we've had several zoning ordinance amendments. The Commissioners are aware we do this routinely as various, as the economy changes, the market changes, et cetera. And what's happened over time since 1997 is that we have created new definitions. So these two uses are today defined as personal services and that's not mentioned in the planned unit development. So that is why they're coming forth for an amendment to that planned unit development. These uses would have been allowed in 1997 to locate in the building as, as offices of a general nature, but because the ordinance has changed and now they're defined as personal services, it's really that kind of legal, technical language that the commission deals with and that's why we're looking at the PUD amendment. The applicants have provided information as to the proposed floor plans. They are not currently occupying the sites. They would like to be in the sites as soon as possible to begin their businesses. They both will be, or are in process of obtaining their state licenses for each facility and should this be approved by the city ultimately, they will be submitting their building permit applications for interior remodels. There are no exterior building or site changes proposed for either of these uses. And this is the floor plan for the hair salon, which is a five-chair hair salon for the other use. We just have the owner that is the business owner, which is Annabots, who will be the sole operator at that. So these uses are very small, limited in number to the number of employees that they have, much more limited in scope as far as the amount of parking that's needed to accommodate these uses than the previous applications we've had for daycare and religious assembly and those types of uses. The applicants basically both will operate, their hours of operation generally will be starting at nine o'clock in the morning at the earliest, so they will be later, opening later than the standard rush hour, if you will. And then they will be operating into the evening up to eight or nine o'clock. So again, they're not having a large number of their customers or employees that will be coming and leaving the site during those rush hour times. So it's not anticipated that, that this will have negative impact on the existing or future We did provide the development summary chart that is part of the application. And overall, taking into account the existing uses, this particular building does have three other businesses already within the building, so we have the two uses added. Ultimately, the number of parking spaces, if you consider what's existing out there today, plus if office, small office were developed for the other two buildings, then you would have a parking demand of 91 spaces to 100 spaces. The applicants will not have full staff, if you will, for the hair salon. They don't have full staff at any one time. They have They have, and, you know, up to six people working there, but they are operating on different days, working on different days, um, mostly by appointment. And so, the minimum number of sites is ninety-one. There are ninety-six that are on the property now, and the nineteen ninety-seven PUD, um, also allowed or indicated that there was a deviation. They had shown that there are locations for up to a hundred spaces on site. Um, the city granted the deviation to let them have four fewer spaces, just as a trade-off for the, um, impervious surface, uh, increase. So, they could be constructed if needed, um, and we believe that parking, uh, will not be an issue for the property. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held, uh, last week on Thursday evening. It was attended by four, uh, four residents, uh, from the neighborhood, and, um, the applicants were able to explain, uh, the basics of what their businesses are that are proposed, and the, um, the property owners who were there were very supportive. We did receive an email, um, today in, that was provided to the planning commissioners, uh, a vote of support for the applications as proposed. With that, the recommendation from staff is, uh, we do support the application as proposed. Uh, we recommend, the planning commission recommend approval of the PUD amendment to the council, um, subject to three conditions, and these are, uh, fairly standard. Uh, the conditions of previously approved PUDs and CUPs will still remain in full force and effect. Uh, there is a need for trash enclosure on the site, um, and that is, uh, something that is the property owner's responsibility to do. Um, we're recommending a condition that they do need to provide the trash enclosure on the property, and this is, uh, similar to what we have recommended, um, in the other applications as well. And then also, there will need to be separate sign permits obtained before any exterior signs are, uh, placed on the site. And with that, I can stand for questions, and we do have both, uh, both applicants here this evening that can address questions that the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Um, I just want a, one point of clarification. The amendment is just for one-three-seven-eight-six Frontier Court. It is not for the other two buildings, correct?
Correct.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Benke.
And Deb, to carry that further, is it only for these two locations, these two locations within that building?
I think we'd look at it as for the building in terms of, yeah, in terms of the size.
But not for the entire project?
Correct.
Even though it's essentially the same PUD and was then and is now?
Right. The reason that, um, we are approaching it, uh, this way is because of the parking, and for instance, you could have a salon that maybe is much larger, uh, and that would have a much different impact to parking as opposed to what is proposed. So we're looking at allowing these two personal services, basically as identified within this building.
Sure. I would expect that, uh, if any operation that takes space is gonna have a traffic count that'll go with it, and this is simply a way to manage that against the parking.
Correct.
Okay. Um, given other situations that have occurred in the past, I know that we're making this a, the, the trash enclosure a condition of this, um, what happens to these applicants if the property owner doesn't comply?
Uh, the property owner is responsible for it, so there would be, um, it would not be a code action against the tenants. It would be something, uh, that would be taken with the property owner.
And under the unlikely event that they need those for extra spaces, they would also, that's how we would handle requiring them to add them, again, in the unlikely event that they would be needed.
Yes.
So we would actually have to probably start a code enforcement action for them to get them to do it unless they did it.
Exactly.
Once we ask them to.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, but when we discussed past applications, several meet, meetings recently, one of the concerns that, uh, neighbors had was that traffic at around eight o'clock in the morning. Um, I noticed that both of these, um, businesses, uh, say, uh, eight AM star time, would that cause any problem, um, traffic-wise for the neighbors? Or did they, the neighbors who attended the, the public meeting, did they express any concern about that?
Commissioner Singh, I could, I could answer that. I was in attendance of the neighborhood meeting and, uh...
You attended as a neighbor, as a, a neighborhood resident?
As, as, I was, I attended as the chair of the planning commission. Um, there were, uh, three, four people in attendance, uh, plus the applicants, and the neighborhood, uh, that represented the meeting was in support of the applicant.
That's because it was raised and I wanted to make sure that, that the neighbors were, um, especially, uh, the residents, uh, were comfortable with that, so I don't have anything against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Workman.
Uh, I look at this as a positive to the space. Occupancy is better than vacancy, and so I'm excited to vote for an approval.
I haven't held a public hearing yet, but that's okay. Commissioner, 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 Commissioner Levy.
I'm kinda conflicted in this. I think there's a need for the businesses in, in there, um, but we've just said that we won't, in the previous application, we don't wanna change the code. Here we're asking to change, I guess, the ordinance, if it, if you will, um, which, what, two years ago, the council changed the, the definition in the ordinance, or whatever it was, if I recall from previous discussions? Um, I, I'm, I'm very strong in consistency, and whether that's valid or not, that, that's my question.
I can address that, I believe, Commissioner. Um, this is a planned unit development, and because the original planned unit development was so specific in the uses, we have to go by what the current ordinance states at the time of application. So, it has nothing to do, really, it's not something that is caused by the property owner or any of the tenants. It's something, for very different reasons, um, the city has updated different zoning standards, and it happens to apply. For instance, we were working, uh, a number of years ago to try to make sure that the various uses within each of the zoning districts was consistent. Um, sometimes we refer to things as office, sometimes we refer to things as a clinic or as a, a this or that. So what we did in our amendment is, we made, uh, and this is very common with other, uh, other community ordinances as well, we reflected the uses, uh, that were permitted, um, that are service-type things, barber shop, hair salons, uh, the esthetician, et cetera, as all personal services, so that you have one, basically, definition of all of those things, and that's identified in each of the districts. So in this case, we're not, um, we're not doing something that's inconsistent with this PUD. The whole purpose of this is that because of the ordinance changes in those definitions and the fact that personal services didn't exist as a use, that we're asking to amend that planned unit development. It's not a change in the ordinance, um, it's a change in this planned unit development because it was so specific.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Any further questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to step up and speak to this application. Please, uh, step up and give us your, come on up. If we have specific questions, we can ask them to come up, but...
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Jim Giebel. I live at seventeen zero one Victoria Lane, Burnsville, Minnesota.
Good to see you again, Mr. Giebel.
Good to be here, I suppose. Um, I know you guys have a tough night already, so I'll, I'll try to make it quick. Uh, we basically gave the neighborhood residents a night off because everybody was basically in approval, uh, of the two applicants. I did attend the, uh, the meeting last Thursday evening to, uh, meet the, the two applicants. I guess the good things I heard, uh, Mr. Singh, Commissioner Singh, you addressed the, the start times, I believe, were later, uh, like nine o'clock, and they went later in the evening, so we missed both the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour, which obviously is a positive, uh, for that intersection and for the neighborhood. I think just by the structure of their very business, uh, we're limited to the number of customers and parking and the traffic that's gonna be in the area, uh, which, again, we view as a positive. Uh, we do not see these two businesses being invasive in any way, whether it be traffic or parking or volume of. Uh, it fits the vision that we had back in ninety-seven of, of small business, even though that definition has changed, um, and, uh, so that, that's a, a positive thing as well. We know in the past, uh, these three office buildings, uh, have coexisted with the neighborhood. Uh, they were a hundred percent occupancy, uh, for many years, or near full occupancy, so we know it could work. So I think if we continue down this path of, uh, looking for small business, um, with other definition that falls under, that's gonna be a good thing. I guess lastly, uh, we view these, uh, two new businesses as very, uh, complimentary to the existing businesses already there, uh, and we request that, uh, adding the personal services, uh, to the existing small business use be approved this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. You know the drill. Okay.
Hi, my name is Diana Mauer. I live at one-three-eight-zero-zero Frontier Lane, just south of the, the planned development. Um, and I wanted to firstly extend my, um, apologies for not being able to make Thursday's meeting. Wanted to be there, but unfortunately I couldn't. Um, uh, the reason why I wanted to be there is just because I wanted to show my support for, uh, this use. This use, I think, falls right into what we had hoped would be a type of business that would, um, fall under, uh, the definition of small business use, small office use, um, in, in that area. Uh, the one thing that I have done since the last meeting is be, uh, in contact with, with Ms. Deb. Um, and the, the question I have, um, about this development, um, I didn't realize that I had any input into it in the past, which is the signage. Uh, as the orientation of the signs on McAndrews are typically very bright, um, LED lights they look like, and, uh, they're at a rather high level, which is great, uh, but unfortunately they're on twenty-four-seven, which is, uh, difficult to have them, uh, shine right into our backyard, you know, every night. So, um, I see that there's, number three here says that it's a separate permit, so I don't even know if this is an opportunity to bring it up tonight or not, um, but that is something that I am hoping can be addressed with this, is, is some sort of, um, reasonable compromise where, you know, businesses, of course, need to have their signs on when they're in business and everything, but just to see what could be done to make it more reasonable, um, uh, dimming of the lights or, or turning off of the signage overnight, if that's possible. And my expectation is, my hope is, to then, uh, ask the existing businesses just on, you know, uh, friendly, um, terms to, you know, see if they would be willing to, to do the same, um, since they're, they're, according to Ms. Deb, there was no restriction put in for the signage at the time that the PUD was approved for these, for these applications. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to that. Mr. Root, good evening.
How you doing? Brian Root, uh, I own the, uh, building. My wife and I do. One-three-seven-nine-five Frontier Court, uh, immediately to the east. Um, I think it's great that these folks are, are coming in. That's super. I did, um, um, hear the, the lighting be addressed. Uh, we want to be good neighbors, uh, ourselves, and I wanna make sure that, uh, the, uh, commission, uh, knows that our lights are set to go off at ten PM along with the, uh, the signage, and it comes on at five-thirty in the morning because our people start showing up, uh, before six o'clock. So we try to be, uh, be good neighbors, and, uh, if there's ever an issue, give us a call. So, that's a lot to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Come on up.
Do you, do you want me to, or did you?
No, yeah, go ahead.
I'm Anna Botts, and I live at one-one-two-two Aston Place, and I'm one of the applicants with Cheryl. And after a lot of planning and a lot of thought and heart and soul, this is just a dream for us that we have this opportunity. I was also on the opposing end of applicants that were going into the two adjacent buildings. Um, and we did not think we'd be in this position to even be applying for this because we were not sure if we were gonna go in there if the other applicant was approved. Um, we were concerned about parking for our own business. Um, I do have to say that the building that we are going in already existed of personal services. Um, there's a chiropractor, physical therapy, and Howard Jones, and the, and the spot where I'm going in, there was an esthetician in there, but because of the PUD changes, that's why we're here today. Um, we take great pride in the community and the people that we serve. We've both been in the industry for multiple years, myself, twenty-three, and Cheryl. They are on a smaller, more intimate scale. That's how we wanna keep it, and, um, we would really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Ms. Garros, do you wanna address the signage question?
Uh, yes, we did look into the signage, and, um, as you know, there are several different planned unit development approvals that have occurred out here. On this particular one, there was not, um, any limitations to lighting, um, signage, et cetera. We do have in our B2 zoning district, um, which is, this is B3 with a planned unit development. The B2 zoning district, we do have, um, limitations on how late, um, lighting can be, and it should be shut off, um, I believe, at, during times when the business is not open. That is also a condition that was placed on the, um, the PUD that affects, um, Mr. Root's site for Celadon, uh, and, um, the other properties to the east of Frontier Court. Um, so there's not a restriction, um, on this site for, uh, lighting. There are only a couple of lights, um, they are downcast, uh, nothing related to signage. We can contact the owners and ask them, you know, let them know that we've received, you know, some input from the neighborhood that, um, they would like to see if they can turn that down, um, but that is not, and it's not part of the application this evening. Um, we could address that to, you know, the, the signage for these two businesses, but to go back retroactively, um, I don't believe we have the authority to do that.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Yes?
Deb, don't we have ordinances on light spillage and, and?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yes, we do, um, and this does conform to the, um...
Okay.
To that.
So, so what we have there now meets?
Meets the ordinance.
Those parts of the ordinance that address light spillage and glare and all those kinds of things.
Yes.
However, obviously, if somebody had an issue with glare, they could contact you about that.
Yes.
And you could look into it and see what could happen.
Yep. There just are not any limitations in this PUD for this site, for the...
Like it has to be turned off at ten or whatever?
Correct.
I would assume as you look at exterior signage, you could look at, like, the neighbors and possibly not having it on all night? Okay.
They might not have a choice. It might be, uh, certain that they don't have a choice.
Right, but I think they can look into it. Commissioners, your comments? I did, didn't I? Yes, I closed the, I closed the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this application is a very positive one. Mr. Chair, this application is a very positive one.